All right, we'll call to order the, this work-study meeting of Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Lloyd.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Allison, here. Newmaster.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Okay.
Here.
All right. And with that, I guess we will roll into the first item of business, or discussion item, I should say, and that is the school presentation of Otter Lake Elementary and White Bear Lake Area High School's South Campus.
Hello, good evening. Thanks for having us. We're excited to share a little bit about what we've got going on in our schools, highlight some things, really speak from some pride of the work that we're doing here in White Bear Lake. So I'm gonna go first, I'm gonna talk about Otter Lake. My name is Cynthia Mueller, Principal at Otter Lake. This is my third year as Principal at Otter Lake. So really highlighting this is the work with our strategic plan and how we're moving forward. A lot of all the things that we are doing, we're being really intentional with moving forward with our strategic plans. So first, I wanna start with just highlighting our mission, because again, this is what's driving all of the work that we're doing. When we developed this as a strategic team, we really wanted to honor the traditions that we had at Otter Lake with also looking forward. So that's what you'll see in our identity. It has always been a very collaborative community at Otter Lake, between teachers, families, the community, and so we really wanted to note that there. We also align with the district's strategic plan in inspiring each student. We wanted to call out that it was each student. And then our critical attributes, a lot of work with both our indoor and outdoor learning. Something I just wanna quickly highlight is, we just wrote around, or did a ribbon-cutting ceremony on our outdoor classroom. That is up and running now, it's a beautiful outdoor classroom. The regard for student perspective piece, what went into that discussion was a lot around student voice and choice. So also, when we look, when we talk about student agency, we really wanna take into account their perspective. Partnerships, relationships, always important to us, diversity. And then that final piece, kindness, empathy, and compassion, really speaks to the work that we had already started going into our strategic planning around social-emotional learning. So with that, I'm gonna highlight three key areas that we've been working on at Otter Lake. And really, this is kinda the overview of timeline of our strategic plan that we did, and taking apart the different components of it, and kinda trying to phase it out. Our leadership team at Otter Lake is really tasked with implementing this, moving this forward, monitoring it, and these are the pieces that we are focusing on. But for this first year, the first one, and one component of it, all students will achieve academic growth. And specifically, we are doing a lot of work, a lot of focus around literacy, the ability to read, write, speak, and think. Three key areas there, then, are effective methods of instruction. I cannot emphasize enough that basically what it all comes down to is effective instruction, and teachers that can implement effective instruction. Equitable access for all of our students, and then evidence of student learning. We really capitalize on a process that we have called CITs, Collaborative Inquiry Teams, really in the educational world, professional learning communities. We meet every week in our CITs for fifty minutes, and then we capitalize using our, whatever professional development days we have. What has been really instrumental, though, in really seeing this to fruition is our instructional coaching model that we're using. Because when you look at it, so the standard professional development model is, you stand and deliver, teachers learn something, and then they're tasked with going back and putting it into their classroom. Well, if we did that with students, we probably wouldn't see much growth out of them. So we wanna replicate, what should, what does good instruction look like for students? Adults need that same, that same opportunity. So we're going backwards and designing our instruction about what do we want teachers to know and be able to do, and then how do we utilize a gradual release to really ensure that they are able to effectively do that? And that's really what our instructional coach is allowed, is able to do. She follows a team through a coaching cycle. Yes.
So I read through all this, and so-
Yeah.
The one question that came up to me, so how do we know-
Mm-hmm.
-that when we do these CITs, and they're supposed to take to their classrooms, how do we know that they're taking in the information and they're actually effectively using that in the classroom?
Yep. Great question. So a couple pieces, and really what's important is that triangulation and multiple data points of scene. So one of them we're talking about is evidence of student learning. So we always wanna bring it back to, so if we're doing this, we should see an impact on our students, right? If it is effective, and it is how we should be doing it, we should see evidence of student learning. So that is integrated through all of our CIT processes. The other piece is, we have our leadership team that is really involved in gaining feedback from teachers. We do that through surveys, through team discussions, and then bringing that back. And then the other piece is the observations that I do. I do frequent walkthroughs in classrooms, and I usually have an instructional point that I'm really looking for specifically. So we've been doing a lot with phonics instruction. And we have key components that I'm looking for, so then when I go into those classrooms, I'm looking at, in general, is the building, how are we doing, and then are there specific needs of individual teachers? So it's really using multiple data points to really see how are we doing with that.
So just a follow-up question to that, then. So do we have a baseline for, say, a second-grade teacher have a baseline for all of their students on these things, and then she goes back and, or he goes back and takes a look at those things to see how they've done against the baseline?
Yes, correct. So let me give you one specific example to phonics. So prior to direct instruction in a phonetic skill, teachers do a pre-test, and they look at that as a whole grade level, where are our students at? Then they administer the instruction, and really what we want is that they're doing ongoing checks throughout that week to see are students picking up that skill. We don't wanna wait till the post-assessment. But then we do have a formalized post-assessment that they also bring to their CIT meetings to look at. Did the students achieve what we've explicitly taught and should expect that they'd be able to do? Do they have that skill? And if not, what do we do now? Thank you. Yep. March.
Kinda following your good questions. I know that you guys have been working on this probably two or three years, this model. So do you have any data from last year? You can tell they're better, I'm sure, at the post-test after they've had their instruction. But how do you compare it to that same level last year?
Mm-hmm.
You know, do we see, 'cause some of these teachers I know have been working, 'cause you did like, was it an internship with a college that kinda kicked off the idea maybe three years ago with the literacy coaches that came from Africa? So they've been doing it at Otter, this, I bet, is at least the third year. So do you have any baseline from, you know, now that you've had three years of this model, at least?
Yes, within literacy, so we always, as a district, we have specific benchmarks that we're always looking at. So one example would be their instructional reading level. Each student sits down with their teacher multiple times a year, reads a passage, they check their accuracy, their fluency, and then their comprehension, and we look at those building-wide trends, 'cause really that's putting also all of literacy together. It's more of a comprehensive assessment. So we use multiple markers. So benchmark reading assessment would be one of them, we do the FAST fluency assessment. We have, in the past, we've done the NWA MAP, now we're doing the FAST bridge assessments. We're using all of those in that triangulation piece.
So you would have that data from a previous year to compare and see how it's going this year with the full-tilt model?
Right. And we utilize those big assessments throughout the year, but really what is really meaningful is those ongoing assessments that they're frequently doing in their classroom and bringing to their weekly CITs. 'Cause if we wait for those big assessments, there's a large gap of instruction that has happened, so we wanna be able to monitor very frequently and adjust, adjust, adjust. Yep. Yep.
So the only thing I was thinking, I'm assuming that when they're creating their formatives, that then you're allowing them to, then they can start looking for some extensions or interventions, and that's the piece that's critical, because then you catch them before that test where it's too late, and that's the opportunity they get, and the teams then get the opportunity to examine their data and then to share amongst their colleagues so that we can use the collective knowledge of there to move our kids forward?
Yep. That is exactly how it works. Yep.
Sorry, one more follow-up. So, I don't know how much I believe in this, but I'll ask the question anyways. So you guys have been doing this for three years, then? Have you seen any difference in, what is it, the, we start the, we do the testing at third grade and then on the MCA, we do the differential between those years to see, have we noticed any movement on that?
So specifically to the MCA? Is that specific to that assessment?
Yeah, since that's what, you know, when we go to the state side, that's what every school-
Yeah. So, well, I wanna back up a little bit. So as far as, so we've been doing this for three years, and I just wanna make sure I understand, the literacy focus, is that specifically what you're talking about, the work we're doing?
Well, any areas you've been doing?
Yeah. So our, this is our second year of a really significant literacy focus. So since that time, yes, we have seen an increase in our MCA scores, especially when you follow cohort groups of students as they move up. So rather than just, what was third grade this year, what's third grade next year, when we follow those cohort groups of students, we have seen an increase in our scores.
So has it only been with a group of students that we're doing this with? What do you mean, our cohort students?
So to look as a measure of, are we having an impact on student learning? We look at a group of students and we follow them as they've received-
Cohort in that context means like a grade of-
Yes.
-grade of students moving from one to the next, all students.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I thought you were saying a specific group within that, okay, I get it.
So like a non-example, frequent, what they'll do is, they'll say, okay, what were your third-grade scores in 2018-19? What are your third-grade scores in 1920? What we're doing is, these third graders as they become fourth and fifth. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think there's two kind of parts of the conversation happening right now. There's one about teaching and effective teaching practices and fidelity of implementation around some really key learning areas. And so Cynthia has done a great job of really helping with how to teach phonics, really helping with guided practice with teachers. We always wanna connect that with learning outcomes, but learning is a little more messy. And that's where I appreciate the comments about, you need to be thinking about accelerations and interventions, because their mission statement is around each child. And that's why it's connected to the typical cohort analysis, because you don't wanna compare this year's third graders to the third graders three years ago and wonder if you're doing better, and not based on comparing two completely different groups. And that's why Cynthia was talking about a cohort analysis, where you're really following the students to see how they're growing over time and developing their literacy skills.
Well, that's kind of what I was asking, 'cause I would never compare one class to another, because there's so many different factors that go into that. But I, us, like I said, I'm not also of the opinion that those MCA scores tell us much of anything sometimes. So I just like to see, does it have an impact, doesn't it have an impact on that particular thing, since that's what we're always graded against with the other schools and statewide?
Yep. Yep. Couple things that I wanna highlight before I move on to the next topic is around that equitable access for students, is, we really believe it is, it's critical, it's important that all students have access to really good instruction. And in order to do that, we really had to look at our collaborative structures between special education and general education. And then with that also is really looking at our instructional schedule, and how do we maximize the learning time and really protect the core instruction that students aren't pulled into different areas? And so we spent time this summer meeting as teams, and really designing our instructional schedule to allow that to happen. The next area I wanna talk about is social-emotional. This is now our second year of full implementation of a social-emotional curriculum. It's called Second Step. And we really came out in our strategic plan when we were in the midst of our first year of teachers already saying this is of huge benefit to our students. And we've really continued the work that we're doing around that. So again, effective methods of instruction, equitable access, and evidence of student learning. Those are really our three buckets we look at academically and social-emotionally. We continue to use, every month we have a building CIT. This includes all classroom teachers, special education, specialist teachers, itinerant staff, everybody is in on this, learning about how do you teach social-emotional skills. Utilizing our PD days, we also have subgroups that work on specific strategic plan items. One of the big differences, we are, switches we made from year one to year two of social-emotional focus was, we felt it was really important to have a designated, protected time every day for social-emotional instruction. And what that really allowed us to do, so it's 9:15 to 9:30, is every classroom is doing social-emotional instruction at that time. It allowed us to do a partner-teaching model, and you could think of it as a co-teaching model. So our special education teachers are assigned a partner teacher with a classroom teacher, and they're going in and team-teaching social-emotional skills. And really what we found there is it's strengthening the collaboration between teachers, but it's also deepening that common knowledge, our common language, common knowledge amongst our entire team to reinforce and explicitly teach social-emotional skills. We also collect evidence of student learning. Really, right now what we're at is, we're operating under the assumption, knowledge precedes application, and it's really easy for us to assess students' knowledge of social-emotional skills. What we're still trying to tweak out is, how do we collect efficiently, effectively evidence of their application of those social-emotional skills? 'Cause there can be, you know, such in-the-moment kind of things, and big things, and so we're still working on that as a team through our collaborative, our CIT work, but that's something we're still pondering how to do.
So I know you're trying to create some type of proficiency scale, so that you know what it looks like? And that way, if a teacher, you can just be there in the moment and see it, now they know they've mastered that?
Yeah. Yeah, that clarity about what do you really want students to know and be able to do?
Absolutely.
Yep. And what does that look like vertically, a kindergartner to a fifth grader? Yeah.
Is that something that Lisa is part of?
Yeah. So I, yeah, I was gonna talk about multi-tiered systems of support, the MTSS. And so really that, we have a coaching model that Dave Stern and Jill Testman work on, and they come out and meet with our team. And actually, Dave Stern has been really helpful in helping us understand, how do we evaluate the application of these skills? And so we're actually gonna do a prototype, a rapid cycle with one individual teacher, just to kinda get it started and see what that might look like, and hopefully build from there.
That might be something you'd be interested in maybe getting an update on in that work-study meeting, that, the work we're doing there at the elementary level. If you find it interesting.
Oh, I didn't see you down there, Lisa, sorry. I should have.
Yeah, March.
I've seen some of the evidence as Leah's on it, and heard people talking about it, and the PTA gets a lesson every time, and, you know, it's a good job. How do you pull in your non-FTE team? Because they're as important as everybody else, whether it's cafeteria, custodial, whatever. So what, how do you find the time to make sure everybody has the language and the philosophy in your team that's your whole team?
Yep. That's a really great question. I don't think we've perfected it yet. A couple of things we do, I meet with all of the paraprofessionals quarterly, and I give them a little mini lesson. The other is, I record morning announcements every day, that also goes to all of our staff, and I give a little mini lesson to all the students that builds off that common language and understanding that we're doing. I meet with my lunchroom and recess staff as well, and we do it. Yes, the challenge is to, when they're there, students are there. So how do we balance all of that? Absolutely, that is kind of our next wondering.
I'm just thinking of how important they are to atmosphere, and I spent 11 years at Lake Ayers to start my career, and I very much remember my tour through lunchroom, and we used to have lunchroom and bus duty and playground, everybody on the whole school took turns. And that's where there's a lot of conflict sometimes.
Yes. Yep, a lot of opportunities to apply or reinforce those specific skills. Yes.
Bring you.
Yep. So then the next piece is, I wanna talk about partnerships. This was another piece that really came out in our strategic plan. And where we're at with this, this year, is really, we want to define and identify criteria for partnerships. What are we really looking for when we talk about partnerships? What partnerships already exist at Otter Lake? And how do they fit within where we are designing to go? We wanna involve students in this process, and then we also wanna evaluate our current partnerships. So this is ongoing work that we haven't started yet, but is part of our leadership team that we will be doing, really to set the groundwork for the other parts of our strategic plan in partnerships the next few years. So that's what we've got going on at Otter Lake. Any other questions?
All right, I'll transition over. Hi, I'm Don Bosch, I'm the Principal at the South Campus. Thank you, everybody. Just interesting, just to listen to Cynthia and the things that are going on at Otter Lake, there's a lot of parallel that's going on at Otter Lake that's also going on at South Campus as well, too. So it was, it was great to hear a lot of the initiatives that are going on at Otter is also kind of occurring here at South Campus as well, too. So just wanted to kind of cover some of the initiatives that are occurring at South Campus. One of the first things that started last year for us was our enhanced advisory program that we had. Last year, we had a one-day-a-week, 45-minute advisory program for our students, and it was more academic-focused than anything else, to be honest with you. And so we took a hard look last year as far as can we do some things a little bit differently to enhance that advisory program? And so we did some research, we had extensive conversations with our building leadership team, we also had some conversations with students as well, too. And at the end of the year last year, we incorporated a pilot for a week where we did 30 minutes each day, and then we surveyed our staff and students and got feedback from them. And from that feedback that we received, we implemented an enhanced advisory for this year, which really came down to adding an additional day of 45 minutes for the academic component, but also looking at the social-emotional component as well, too, which was something that we were lacking in prior to that. So students have two days a week where they have 45 minutes where they can choose where they'd like to be throughout the building, and some of our students choose the academic component still, if they have a need for that. Some of our other students choose the social-emotional piece. So some examples of that that are occurring at South Campus is, in the media center, in our cafeteria, in some of our commons areas, where students will just have an opportunity just to maybe just kind of relax a little bit from their day, and just talk to their peers. They may also go into the media center and access our makerspace as well. We also have students that are engaging in our gymnasium and doing some physical activity as well, because we've had feedback from our students that they just need an outlet, and that provides them with that kind of outlet. So that's been very successful for us. We also have a task force that we also have in place that consists of students and staff that meet on a regular basis, just to continue to get feedback with our advisory program, how it's going, what's working well, what can we enhance? And so that continues and it's ongoing, and we're actually gonna have a survey that's gonna come out second semester here, just to get a sense from our students and our staff, you know, things that are going well with our enhanced advisory program, what are some things that we can possibly build upon for the future? Yes?
Is this basically the same thing as Bear Time that they use at North Campus?
Yeah, so we had conversations around, what do we call it? And I think we just, we had advisory in the past, and I think just for consistent terminology at the South Campus, we kept it as advisory, but very similar to Bear Time at North Campus as well. Yep. One of the other pieces that we've already, that we have in place, and Cynthia alluded to this, is our collaborative inquiry teams. And our focus on the last few years is really looking at our formative and summative assessments and aligning those across departments, especially with common courses. And as you know, at South Campus, we have a lot of courses that students have an opportunity to choose. So we spent a lot of time in the last few years, especially last year, looking at our summative assessments and making sure that they're common, and also really kind of digging down and looking at the data, once we've given that summative assessment and we've got that data back, and then really taking a look at what's working well and what's not working so well, and how can we take a look at our instruction in the future and change our instruction to make sure our kids are achieving at a high level? So that's been very informative for our staff. I know our staff have really appreciated the time they have with our collaborative inquiry teams. We don't meet weekly like they do at Otter, we meet after-school, usually on Tuesdays, and anytime we have professional development opportunities as well, too. A big building goal for us this year, oh, yes, sorry.
Don, I just have a question. What is WICOR again?
WICOR? It's an, it's, it's an AVID acronym that stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading.
Okay.
So one of the things that we do at both campuses is, we infuse AVID strategies into our instruction. And so WICOR strategies are just, it's an acronym that we use with our staff. One of our big building goals at South Campus this year across all departments was really taking a hard look at our AVID strategies and making sure that they're being incorporated into our instruction with what we do on a daily basis. So what we asked all of our departments to do this year is come up with a department-wide goal of how are they gonna infuse AVID strategies with what they do within their instruction? And so we asked them at a minimum to do that twice a week, and we have some departments that are going above and beyond twice a week. And so every department is a little different as far as what AVID strategy they decided to infuse into their instruction. We have some departments that are really focusing on writing, we have some departments that are focusing on organization, we have some departments that are really focusing on maybe reading. So, and then what we've done with that is, we've asked them to go within their department, talk to their colleagues within their department, and gather evidence, and then we come back as a building leadership team, and also during our staff meetings, and share out what's going on with each department. So if a department's really, if their focus has been inquiry, what are the strategies that they're using to enhance the inquiry that's going on in their classroom? If their focus is reading, what are they using for reading strategies within their classroom? So it really gives our departments an opportunity to look at other departments where they might not have that opportunity in the past, to see what's going on across departments. And so we've had departments that really have taken a strong look at things and said, well, I really like what's going on, let's say, in the art department, we're gonna kind of take some of those strategies and maybe infuse those in our social studies department. Along with that, some of the professional development that we've done as well is, we've looked at ed camp sessions where we've had focuses on student engagement, student agency, WICOR again. We've taken a strong look at microaggressions that are occurring and how we can alleviate some of those microaggressions, student agency. We've taken, we've done some work on our equity commitment statement and the decision-making protocol as well. We continue our work with implicit bias as well. We're doing some work with respectful conversations, not only with our staff, but also with our students. Our staff are gonna do some training later this year, and then next fall, we're gonna do some training with our students. A lot of feedback from our staff and also from students around respectful conversations, especially around the political environment that we have going on right now, as you can imagine. So it's good to have conversations, but we wanna make sure those conversations are occurring in a respectful manner. And so just to have some professional development around that is going to make our staff feel a bit, a little bit more at ease, and also our students as well, too. So, oh, question. Yes?
Can you explain microaggressions? What are you talking about?
Yeah, so there's a lot of different types of microaggressions. We have some types where there might be racial microaggressions, we have some that can be more gender microaggressions. So sometimes that can occur from students' perspective, like when they have conversations with staff or amongst staffs themselves, and really looking at their own bias as far as microaggressions, and maybe like, saying something that shouldn't be said that might offend a certain gender or a certain group of students, and really maybe looking at a different way of having those conversations around, like, what you said, if you might not have realized what you said could really impact a student or a group of students in a negative fashion, and maybe there's a different way we can have that kind of conversation than the way that you presented yourself.
Can I give an example? Can I give an example?
Sure.
So it would be like saying to a person of color, "Well, you're so articulate," in a way that is surprised that that person would be articulate.
I mean, I'm familiar with microaggressions, I guess I was just wondering what was happening with students, that, that's, specific information is good.
So sometimes one of the things that we deal with on a more regular basis is, sometimes the students might say, "Well, that's really gay." There's an example of a microaggression that we really have conversations around. So some of our strategic plans are three tactics that I will share with you as well, also aligns with some of the work that we've done that I shared with you earlier. Our first tactic is, will we hear, honor, and include each student's voice? And so some of the bullet points beneath that is just some of the work that we've started or continue to work on. I've talked about our advisory task force, I've talked about our enhanced advisory, our work with equal-opportunity schools, that's what EOS stands for, teacher career pathway externships, that was something that was started that was new this summer, that some of our students took, or some of our teachers took advantage of. Looking at hiring staff that really meets the demographics of our students is always something that we're always looking at and will continue to work on. Curriculum and course offerings, I think in the past, we really haven't had a lot of student voice behind that, and that's something we're really looking forward to incorporating in as we move forward with looking at different course offerings for our students, making sure that really fits the needs of our students. And course scheduling as well, too, making sure our course, our schedule is flexible for, that meets the needs of our students as well. Our second tactic is, we'll ensure that each student establishes and achieves their unique learning goals. Again, looking at flexible school scheduling, we tried to do something this year that really didn't have a lot of momentum behind it, but we will continue to do that in the future, is offering opportunities before our school day starts, or even offering opportunities after our school day ends, for those students who maybe because of their schedule or their family situation, they need that opportunity to make sure they can get the classes that[1780.12] get the classes that they need to be successful. And then mentorship program.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
Because when we offer it before or after school, have we addressed them inequities of some students who don't have transportation there? How are we providing them the opportunity to get there?
So when we do provide those opportunities before, after school, if there is an issue of transportation, that's a barrier, we also want to make sure they're providing those same courses during the school day as well, too.
Okay.
Yep. And the mentorship program is something that we started on a small scale this year. We're working with, with a nonprofit called Genesis Works this year that really targets some of our marginalized students. And we've had, we've had our first meeting about a month or so ago where we went to all of our classrooms.
Past rooms.
And had a conversation with our Avid students. And the, the feedback we've had from our students has been tremendous. We were hoping to get maybe five to seven students that might be interested in this internship program. We had over 25 students that expressed an interest in this program. So that's exciting. And our third tactic is we will provide each student with academic, social, emotional support while challenging them to meet higher expectations. Again, some of the work we've done that we'll continue to do with this is looking at individual learning plans. We have our counselors doing a lot of that as they enter ninth grade, but continue to have those conversations through their four year of high, four years of high school. Looking at expanding tutor and learning centers, and we've done some of that at South Campus this year. A shout out to our students who are part of our National Honor Society. They provided opportunities for tutoring, opportunities for students during the school day, because we know some students can't afford to stay after school or come early as well. So that's another opportunity that they can access during advisory. Professional development support with our, with our staff around innovative teaching practices. We're always encouraging our staff to take professional development opportunities to look at their instruction, how they can enhance their instruction within their classroom. And then modular spaces, we're always continuing, taking a look at our, our revamped media center this year compared to previous years. It's gone, it's gone under a major transformation compared to what we've had in the past. And we've had a lot of collaborative areas for, for students. We've got areas for students where they just, they just need to sit down and, and have an opportunity to, or they just need to take a few minutes to step back and have that opportunity as well, too. That's it.
Okay. Any further questions, comments at all?
Marge?
I'm just going to ask one. I just remember the Avid tutors that used to come after school, and I didn't know if we still have that. Do we still offer Avid tutors? They were in the media center four years ago. I don't know where they are now.
So my guess is if I'm not mistaken, that's probably with our Promise Fellow partnership. We do offer that at South Campus as well. We have a Promise Fellow who stays after school and is, and is also works with our Avid program as well.
Any others?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we are moving to the budget update, I guess. Yeah, old review, revised budget. Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
So today, we're going to do our review of our mid-year budget adjustments. For those of you who don't know, our Director of Finance, Tom Wazork, new members to the board may have not have met Tom yet, but he's usually in an office crunching numbers. But tonight, he's joining me, and he'll be available for questions when we get, if we get into the nitty-gritty of budget adjustments. This slide is familiar to some of you, and so it's just a summary of our annual budget process. So if you look in the upper left-hand corner, you see June is the preliminary budget approval. So at that point, based on the best information we have, projecting enrollment and our revenues and our expenditures, the board approves our operating budget for the coming school year. Sometimes things change, and so we revisit it later, and that's where we're at tonight. It's starting in July and through October. The district has an approved auditing firm that we work with, and our auditors are in and out of finance office throughout those months, July through October, and they're looking at our previous year actuals and, and looking at our complete prior year audit. September comes, and during that time, we need to, the board needs to approve the initial preliminary tax levy. So at that point, the board typically looks at what's the maximum amount that they'll approve, and so we bring that to you and discuss it in September, and, and the board makes that approval at that time. And that's looking ahead to the next year's taxes payable in the next fiscal year. So in September, we'll, we'll bring the initial, the initial tax levy to you, or the preliminary tax levy, and that'll be for taxes payable in '21. In November or December, the auditor completes his or her report. Jim Ickton typically comes in December, and he reviews the books for the previous year and reports that to the board, and then you take action that night to approve the, the audit report. Also in December, we do the truth and taxation hearing, and that's setting the levy for the coming school year. So that's a public meeting. We, we must do it in December by statute, and we're allowed to use a regular school board meeting as the public hearing for the truth and taxation hearing. So we do that every December. At that point, we have our audit, and we begin to look at our mid-year budget adjustments. We bring that to the school board in a work session in January, and then for board approval in February. So that's where we are tonight. And after this process, where you'll look at our mid-year budget adjustments and presumably approve that in February, then we start looking ahead to our preliminary budget for the 2021 school year. You have the budget sheet in the packet, but it prepared just a summary of that document. And so we look at the first column of actuals 2019. Revenues came in about $750,000 higher than expected. Primary reason for that was an increase in federal special, special education dollars. So that was a pleasant, pleasant increase. Our expenditures in 2019 were so very close to the projected, we were within $42,000, within $42,000 in the projected. When you think of $117 million in revenues, to be within $42,000 of that number is like kind of mind-boggling. But we're really close on that. So the net change in fund balance thanks to that increase in revenue, yeah, and there should be brackets around that number of $2,796,000. We expected that number to be in, I believe, around 3.5 million that we'd be dipping into the fund balance, but we did a little better than we expected. So right around 2.8 million. So our ending fund balance is over 17 million, and about 11, well, we're at a percentage of expenditures, 11.7%. Remember that the school board parameters for fund balance is above 12.5%. So we're still at that point below the board-approved parameters, but working toward that number. The next two columns look at the preliminary or the projected 2020 budget that you approved in June, and now with revisions in January. Things do look a little bit better. Revenues came in about $2.3 million higher than expected, and that's again primarily because the Minnesota State Legislature removed the cap on special ed and allowing for, for, for some relief on the cross-subsidy. If you recall, White Bear Lake has a cross-subsidy of about $11 million in special education. So we got some relief on that this year, and so that accounts for the 2.3 million higher than expected. Expenditures did come in higher, about 1.2. Most of that is in personnel, and actually, again, most in special ed, we'll get into that here in a bit. So the net change in fund balance was a million, $1, $1 million. So we projected a negative, that we dip into our fund balance another $527,000 this year, but we're actually going to have revenues over expenditures of $531,000. So the ending fund balance is at 17.6 million, again, about a million more than projected. And that brings us to that 12.7, or 12.4% fund balance number. Any questions on that? So as we look ahead and projecting now several years down the road, we look at 2021. We're projecting an increase of revenues of $4 million. That money coming from increase in special ed, a removal of the cap and cross-subsidy of about $2 million, about $2 million in, in, in our per-student revenue increase. And then our tax levy will increase the balance of that. Expenditures will be up about $4 million. Revenues will be up about $4.2 million. We expect expenditures to be in the $4 million mark, and we think we're going to make a little more progress toward our fund balance again next year. Projecting out to 2022, things get a little more difficult. Those are really gray numbers to, to make assumptions on. We increased about $2.5 million in revenues for 2022, about $2.6 million for 2023. Both of those years show a slight decrease in the fund balance, and, and so, well, by 2023, we see that fund balance dropping a little bit. But again, those are projections. A lot will change between now and then. And we think our revenue projections are probably conservative, but again, you never know. Things can change very quickly. So that's a summary. When we look at revenue specifically. So general education aid is actually down, and that's an enrollment number. We look at our starting enrollment every year, and then our October enrollment. Usually there's a decrease in that number, and that decrease was a little more significant than we expected. So down about 90 students during that time. So we'll continue to watch enrollment closely. Our demographic projections say that students are going to come as the construction occurs, and that construction is starting to really happen in earnest now. So we'll see over the next several years, our enrollments start to turn. Safe schools revenue, if you remember, at the end of last year, the legislature put about $34 million into safe school revenue, and it was based on whether the state finished in a positive position, and it did. And so we were able to capture $300,000 of that safe schools revenue. It's one-time money only, and that will show up in expenditures, too. Special, special education aid, we talked about earlier, almost 2.4 million. Some, our Achievement and Integration Grant was higher than expected. So it was a positive, and there's some interest earnings on that as well. And the expenditures, and we, we added some additional special ed positions as well as some other positions. For example, we added support in the accounting office. Remember that that was one of the recommendations of our auditor, and so we have now an accounting coordinator in the accounting office. We're able to provide additional support in our Achievement and Integration Program through those additional funds that I referenced in increase in revenue, of course, the safe schools, for 1.2 million in expenditure increases. Okay, then back to the summary. So that's where we're at. So it's pretty positive news, things trending in a very good direction. MSBA and really all of the organizations that lobby for schools have been pushing hard for several years for cross-subsidy and special ed cap relief. And so thank you to you, to all of you and your organization, as well as the others who have lobbied for that, because we saw some good movement in that regard.
Is there a sense of, I know the legislation, legislation, the session hasn't begun yet. Do we have a sense of, is it going to be another 2% increase? Is it? Because I think MSBA is pushing for 3% increase. Do we have a sense, or do we have to wait until that starts rolling?
Yeah, we don't have a sense. I think, you know, the lobbying organizations don't get too excited about those numbers until, you know, those revenue forecasts come in. And there's some fuzzy numbers that they're looking at in the long range that I think they're concerned about. So 3% is what all those organizations lobbied for last time.
Right.
The best we could, the best we could hope for with this session coming up is some sort of a supplemental increase in revenue. So the legislature establishes a two-year...
Oh, it's not a budget year.
So this is an off-year. So if there's some supplemental money that might, might come to schools, that, that would be the best we could hope for, and that's probably unlikely. So I, I want to add one thing on the, the special education figures that Tim shared. You know, for years, we've been talking about the special and cross-subsidy, and that White Bear Lake has been the poster child for what's wrong with special ed funding. So the increase that we saw from one year to the next, that, that one-year increase was more than what Minneapolis, or St. Paul, or Anoka, Hennepin, three largest school districts in the state received, which showed how badly we've been hammered by the special ed funding in Minnesota for years. And so finally, something did happen positively for us in that way. But so when you look, if you go look back at the previous years, and we're a million, million and a half short of what we probably should have been for many years in terms of special ed funding. So this is a very significant change for us going forward. And it's not fixed, but it's a lot better than it was.
I have a follow-up to that. Mr. Wall, did you say something about increase in federal special education subsidy or money?
Yeah, the, the federal fund increase was about $400,000.
And it increased?
No, we had some additional carryover dollars. We were able to access one here.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, if it increased, I would have been super surprised. So, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
What was, why was the cap placed to begin with? What was the, the notion behind the cap?
Well, it goes back to, was it 2014? You want to speak to that?
I, I, I think there's just a pot of money, and there's so many ways to allocate that money. And so it goes with the formula, and there's three different assesses, there's three different ways that it comes out, and that's just how they cap it, is because that's so much money they have to expend.
There's only so much to go around, so...
But it wasn't based on need, it was based on...
It was not based on need, or...
Right.
No, not at all.
It created, it created winners and losers.
Yeah.
We were a loser.
It was, I think, with all, with all the right intentions. It just didn't work the way it was expected.
So may I, so how did it end up in our favor? Like, what made them decide to make up for...
Because we were, our expenditures, our, our cross-subsidy and our expenditures was, our actual expenditures were above where the cap was. And so our, you know, anytime we would add, we could add a million dollars in expenditures, and we wouldn't see another dime in revenue, because we were capped out. We couldn't receive any more revenue.
Until they saw that.
We could see, you know, we could see a $5 million increase in special ed, which would be a little bit of an extreme example, one year to the next, but we wouldn't have seen one dime extra revenue for, for that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's what's, that's...
What then all of a sudden made them go, well, White Bear?
The legislature, we just happened to get caught in the, we just happened to be the district that was...
You got lucky?
We didn't get lucky. We just, I think it just speaks to how it wasn't working for many, many districts, and we happened to be one of them.
But the legislature put an infusion of money into the, about 90 million, I think it was.
Yeah. Matamida was also, has benefited tremendously. They were also getting hit pretty hard.
Who else?
Matamida. Interestingly, just a fluke, I think, that happened to be here as part of the metro.
Marge?
My impression was that we get hit more because we have such an amazing special ed program. I mean, they're well-known for what they do on the spectrum and things that people can't get in other schools. So I would think that maybe we get people flocking to our fine program.
Well, I think that's true.
Or we have them here anyway.
And when we do, when they do come to our program...
They're expensive, students.
They're expensive, and the revenue isn't there.
Right. Well, that's what I mean. We've provided an above, you know, we're more than, what is it, more than average, as someone used to say to describe citizens?
We almost function like a regional center, sort of like Bemidji, or Morehead, or Worthington, or Rochester.
Yeah, real high-level.
They attract special ed students because of the program they offer from the area. And we almost function in a similar way, but we're nestled within a metro area. So it's interesting.
I have a neighbor that moved from Wisconsin to White Bear for that reason.
Yep.
So for those, since we don't have a cap anymore, so every single one of our special ed students would now qualify under the general fund, which means we get that extra point, whatever, because they're special education, is that, why that makes so much of a difference to us? to us?
Well, now we're probably getting into, pretty, pretty deep into the weeds in terms of what, what different method is used, but.
I mean, we get a certain, it's a certain thing for each student, and then on top of that, you get the different funding levels. But is that why that cap makes, taking that cap off makes such a difference? Because otherwise, it just comes out of our general fund anyway, and we're still down the money, but we've got to make up for it at least somehow.
And we still have a cross subsidy, and it's still significant, but this has helped. Technically, yes, we still have to make up the difference.
The special ed formula doesn't work on a per-student basis. It works on a percentage of salaries and supplies. However, it doesn't cover the biggest portion, which is the fringe benefits. So it doesn't work the same as the gen ed formula, which is on a per-student basis or AGM basis. It's a whole different funding formula, which is when you're growing, a program gets you in trouble because then the appropriation isn't big enough to cover everybody, everybody's expenses, so then they have to prioritize it. So for years, that's hurt us because there hasn't been enough money available. And then they put a new funding formula in place, and because of the timing of that, we were capped, and we haven't been able to catch up.
So our fund, all things being equal, our fund balance would probably be four, five, six, seven million dollars greater than what it is right now with that, if we head into that, subject to those, to that whole formula.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I do have one, just, it has to do with the grants. I'm just wondering, on a district-wide basis, are we coordinating grant opportunities at all? Because I know, you know, there's been folks and teachers and so forth that have kind of run with different grant opportunities, you know, one school to another and so forth. But I'm just wondering, do we have any consolidated or consistent approach as far as looking for these grant opportunities on a district-wide basis?
Well, we don't have a grant coordinator, and we all sort of.
Nobody's wearing that hat at all?
We see, yeah. You can talk a little bit about it. I mean, we, we learn about grants and pursue them, but.
It just seems like there's so much money out there, you know, to be had. I mean, I don't know so much about school districts, but I know, you know, in, in the corporate world and in the nonprofit world, I should say, there, there seems to be so much money to be had. It's just that a lot of people don't realize that there is that money out there, too. So.
I just think you're spot on because even, there's so many social, emotional grants out there. AFAASA has a huge $400,000 grant opportunity, but somebody needs to have the time to understand the grant specifications and write it out. We have Christina there, Anderson, she has bent over backwards and spent lots of extra hours to pursue grants. I mean, if people are super passionate and they're willing to put in extra time, but you really do also need to have that grant writing expertise of really concisely and very explicitly addressing the questions that are being asked of the grants. But we're, we still pursue, and everybody, you know, works hard to find those revenues, but.
Is there, do we see in other districts where there is any type of district-wide approach? Districts our size, probably not, I'm guessing, but I'm just wondering.
I don't think so. Maybe.
Anoka Hennepin have a grant writer?
We do not have a grant writer.
Okay, so that's a district almost five times the size of ours.
What we have is when we write a grant, we actually ask to be approved. So the secondary teaching and learning, the secondary director or the elementary director of curriculum has to sign off, including even the building principal will sign off. So they, so they know it's coming, so then they can see it, multiple grants are there. But we don't actually have somebody else write it. We just have some checkpoints along the way.
We have a grant writer in Minneapolis, and there are grant writers out there that will, if you get approved, for, for, he wants you to get the grant, I'll take it on. And that could be another way to formulate.
So much of grants is that it has to fit what you're doing. You know, you think of the United Way Grant, the $250,000 grant we got for the Career Pathway Program. It was the right grant at the right time, and we were the right, we were, we were correctly positioned for that grant. And so that's part of it, too, is you have to be positioned in the right place to qualify, or even if you did get it and you weren't positioned right, that, that would be a difficult thing for a school district. Because now you've got the money, but you got to turn the ship quick.
You're answering forever.
Right, yeah, exactly.
It can kickstart something, but it doesn't mean it's sustainable.
Right. That's tricky. All right. Anything else? Anybody? Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
You're at an efficient meeting.
Light agenda.
We've got four minutes.
Anything else, agenda, then we're done, huh? Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Well, this is so much fun. We should stay here.
Who is taking on that?
Yeah.
I'm not going to adjourn, sorry.
Okay, I second that.